This meeting, as you can see, is going to be recorded on that computer. Would you call the roll, please?
Here, where is it?
Here.
Councilor Ryan Bongley, John Peter, Phil Beasley, I guess Peter Waples here, Vaughn Green, and Tony Vanekis Exex.
Would you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen and gentlemen, we honor your hand upon this meeting. This is a public hearing regarding a legal use matter. The matter was given to the planning commission earlier this year and Mr. Carroll, the applicant, chose to have the decision appealed. We are here tonight to listen and consider that appeal. And at this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our attorney, Nathan Ratliff.
Okay, because this is a quasi judicial hearing, there's a declaration or a statement that I'm going to read in accordance with ORS 197.763. This quasi judicial hearing is being conducted in relation to comprehensive plan and land use regulations in Millin, Oregon. The criteria to be considered at this hearing are as follows. One is a request to change in performance with the comprehensive plan and its goals and policies. Two, does a public need exist to justify the rezoning? And is that public need best served by the change? Three, is the public need best served by changing the classification of the particular property at issue? What is the potential impact upon the area resulting from the proposed change? These criteria to be considered in relation to the pending application in light of the comprehensive plan. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or applicable land use regulation which you believe apply to the decision. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford decision maker in the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the board based on that issue. So I drafted a memorandum to the council, to the applicant, Mr. Carroll, and there's copies for the public to set forth the general scope and procedure of the meeting. Again, the applicant had submitted a petition or an application that was considered by the planning commission and the city council, and he's appealed that decision denying his application. City council, the city council has three, essentially three alternatives. They can affirm the planning commission's decision, they can reverse the decision, or they can remand it to the planning commission to make further findings if they so wish. The burden of proof falls upon the applicant, again, to show the fact that we just discussed, which is, or getting our set out in the memorandum, and the decision is to be based upon due consideration of goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. So the testimony and evidence needs to be directed towards those that are considered the relevant issues. The applicant, Mr. Carroll, will have the opportunity to go first and present argument if he wants to in support of information that he may have already provided or any evidence that he's going to present tonight. There's been additional written documents that were submitted to the city on his behalf or by him, and those have been presented to the council and then will be considered by the council in making their decision. In addition to those documents, the record includes all the materials that were submitted to the planning commission, the application, the commission minutes, the notice of intent to appeal, and all of those things have already been provided to council. And in accordance with the notice issued by the clerk, those remain available to the public prior to today's, to today's hearing. So again, the issues have to do with the substance of the application itself. It's a denote co-hearing, so that means the applicant has the opportunity to present additional evidence if he wishes to. The city would have the opportunity, again, to present additional evidence. The applicant will go first, has up to 15 minutes to make argument, and then to present any additional evidence that he may have. The council can take public comment, and I believe there's a sign-in sheet, and public comment is going to be listed, limited to two minutes per person unless the council decides they wish to extend that. After the, all of the, after the public comment period and after the city has had an opportunity to present any evidence or argument that it wishes to present, then the applicant will have an additional five-minute rebuttal argument to present at the end of the meeting to the council. At the end of the meeting, the applicant will have the opportunity to submit within seven days final written argument unless you wish to waive that requirement today. So the record will remain open for an additional seven days, and then at the time that the record's officially closed, the council will then issue a written decision that clearly states its findings and the basis for its decision, and that was within 30 days of the close of the record. So we can, we can begin now with Mr. Carroll if he wants to address council and present any argument, and then after the argument, present any other evidence that he may have.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. And like your attorney had mentioned, we are here for the double appeal hearing, and I'm requesting, and I believe we have accurate and detailed minutes for this meeting now, and I would like to ask the mayor at this time if you could please pull the console and see who has read and reviewed all of the submitted paperwork. Number one, the application, and two, the supplemental package that I gave on Tuesday.
You're not obligated to do that.
I would like to do that. Ryan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
We're talking about everything.
Yes.
That wasn't just for you.
Oh. I thought to be here. Yes.
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 Thank you very much. I thought I'd start off with the history of the property. This property has been a dirt lot for over 100 years. No city utilities have ever been connected to the property, no structure has ever been placed there. Next, I'd like to talk about repurposing this property for residential. You've already done repurposing with the cheesecake, cheese factory across the way. It is now your library and a community center. This building we're in here, the police department, city hall, used to be a medical building. So these two buildings may have been zoned something other than P, which they are now. So that includes maybe the city yard that is zone P, maybe earlier in the day it may have been something else. So there has been precedent set alone for repurposing property. The property itself is surrounded by house, houses. Across the way on Front Street, there are three houses. The corner house on Front and Broadway is a residential unit. Across the way, where, going down Front at Fifth Street, where it turns into Main Street, those are all residential and everything above that, all residential. It does blend into the community at that time. Behind me, there's a gentleman that owns a commercial lot. It's his residence, and he uses it for his trucking business. On the other side of the street, back on Broadway, there's also a manufactured home that's used for residential use, plus it's also their business for their trucking. But it's residence, people are living in those properties. Adjacent diagonal to my property, behind me, where the reason is on Fifth Street, there's churches. So plenty of people own this property and can utilize these residential units very easily. So those two commercial properties, they are not storefronts, they're not retail store. They're just used for trucking or parking, basically. I believe I'm in compliance with the comprehensive plan and land use regulations. The comprehensive plan promotes the action of providing areas suitable and desirable for residential uses with the primary purpose to encourage residential development near the city services. My intended use is to build suitable and desirable resident, residential unit for the current and future citizens of Malin. These units will be in proximity to city services, which means within walking distance. I'd like to go over the recent findings of the planning commission for denying my application in May 2018. One, the planning commission chair admits there is a need for housing, but there is plenty of vacant land to accommodate growth without changing the zoning on my property, and that I did not prove, show proof that the public was better served by a rezoning. Two, the staff report shows significant vacant residential land and limited commercial vacant land. I'm going to address that a little bit further on as well. Three, my control zone change could limit the availability of commercial property and could affect the core city, city commercial area. And A, my first response, again, my research, there's no land for sale, I have met that criteria. B, the city of Malin owns a commercial zone lot between the market and the diner. My understanding is that this lot will be used for a memorial. The city uses, the city's use will be within the prime downtown location and limits the availability of a potential commercial building. The city's use affects the core city commercial area by reducing the lot's commercial use, the lot's commercial use. The memorial is, could be a good idea, but if the city decides to move the memorial at a later date, for what, whatever reason, the memorial, memorial site on a commercial lot may not be approachable to an interested party looking to purchase. So if they see a memorial there, they're driving down, they say, hey, I'm thinking of coming to Malin, well, that is a great spot. The only way anybody will know it's for sale is if the city put a sign on it that they wanted to sell the property. C, my property is away from the core commercial area, and I am reserving one-third of my property to remain commercial for the future consideration. These commercial buildings would face Broadway Street, and so I believe I met the criteria. I'm also saving space for commercial use if there's a major need for it down, but I am not on the main core of the downtown area. I'm off to the side near the residential. D, the benefits of granting my rezoning application. There's going to be pride of ownership, home values rise, more customers for local business. This can directly, indirectly generate funds for the city of Malin by permit fees, hookups, hookup fees, connecting the water, the water bill people pay. I believe I met that criteria. I am helping to meet the housing needs according to the comprehensive plan. By building these residential units, it can encourage other landowners to build residential units on their vacant lots. The plan guides the city how to best serve its community. The population has grown from 638 people in the year 2000. In the year 2016, there were 809 people. That's an increase of 171 people. The plan states that at least 2.4 residential units per year are needed. This means that since 2005, my application to the present, approximately 31 units should have been built, but only a few units may have been added to the community. So I'd like to now address 2005 city council denying my rezoning application because I was not in compliance with the comprehensive plan then, specifically with goal one, policy five, which seeks to encourage community involvement for all phases of the planning process. I have continuously encouraged the city and its citizens to sit down and discuss my rezoning project that the city and its citizens can be proud of. If approved, I am still willing to sit down and discuss this with the city and its citizens and what they want. Do they want houses? They want multifamily units? Let's have an open forum about that. Goal six, policy four, which seeks to preserve or improve the quality of air, water, land resources and to minimize nuisances such as noise from affecting residential areas by keeping residential areas separated, separated from noisy environments. This does not apply to me. My property, as this rezoning will blend in with the residential area. The city has granted permits allowing residents to park their tractor, trailer trucks, or maybe without the trailer park, in their home or in front. So this can happen anywhere in the city now if they get a permit. So noise, it can affect any residential residents now at this time, I believe, correct. The goal nine, policies one and three, which seeks to diversify and improve the economy of the city and which seeks to encourage new business and industry in the community so long as these developments do not affect air, water, and land resources, resources quality of the community, and does not discourage commercial use of the commercial lot. Again, I am reserving one-third acre lots eight through 12 of my property to remain commercial, which faces Broadway Street, the downtown corner area. Goal 10, policy four, which seeks to provide adequate and affordable housing for the citizens of Malin and to encourage multifamily housing on existing residential area. There are no available lots within the city limits to accommodate multiple family housing except for the 2000 annexed property which is not publicly listed for sale. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit more about that. This property up here was annexed in, 40 acres. 26 of these acres, this was R5. They came back and requested with the planning commission to R2. They were supposed to be two-acre lots. And what happened? Nothing got done. They came back in 2012 and requested to combine all the lots back into one tax lot. We were misled, I believe, with the staff report when this was supposed to be available property to be built into the city. It is not. This has been sold, which was not brought forth in the, the staff report and was known to the city officials that this property had been sold and this individual has no intention of doing this at this time. He wants his for his personal use. So we lost that opportunity, I believe.
Somebody who says evidence?
Okay, can somebody pass that out?
No, I'm also been.
Okay, who to?
The city council.
Okay, can you pass that out, please?
We're submitting evidence of the planning minutes, the minutes, what he just explained.
Were those, were those something that you submitted previously, or this is the first?
No, they're not.
Okay. Recently. Okay, so, so goal 13, policy one, D and F, which seeks to provide an orderly and efficient transition from rural to urban land use and to maximize, maximize efficiency of land uses within the existing urban area and to retain compatibility of the proposed urban uses with adjacent uses. This has still been a dirt lot for 100 years and needs to be repurposed. Again, I'm reserving one-third acre lots eight to 12 of my property for commercial use on the Broadway side. Now, I want to touch base on, I've heard undue hardship. Okay, this property purchase was not a self-inflicted undue hardship because I have a fundamental right to purchase available land for sale. I saw and continue to see value in the acre I own, its investment potential. The times of today call for residential units. Property are rezoned regularly. Rezoning is not a new concept. Conclusion. The foregoing reasons why I, why I am, believe I am in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the land use ordinances, the comprehensive plan encourages public and private residential investments beneficial to the community. All I'm asking for is a fair decision according to local and state law and the United States Constitution. I think I skipped a page regarding the property that Mr. Woodley annexed, that was annexed, a property that was annexed, a commercial lot into the city of Malin. That property was purchased on Main Street, and Mr. Woodley came to the council, he requested rezoning from commercial to residential. It was granted, you have it in the packet, and then what happens? He comes back again in 2009, he requested for the property to be split, or he went and had the property split, and then now he's got two manufacturers homes on it that are rented out, and he makes a profit from that. He's benefited from his rezoning. All I'm requesting is the same thing. You've already set precedents. Thank you very much.
Sir, would you like to submit that written?
What?
Your argument, would you like to submit it in writing to the council as well? We can make a copy of it.
Let me review it real quick.
Or you'll have seven days from today if you want to submit, submit that in a revised form as well?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, do you have, so do you have any further evidence? I mean, we, we have everything that was submitted at the, the planning commission stage and the evidence that was presented to the city last week, so that's all incorporated into the record. Do you have any further evidence?
Only if, my time that I have later, if something comes up, you know.
Yeah, so you can, you'll have a chance at the end to, to reflect and give your closing argument.
Exactly, thank you very much.
So there, the planning commission, all that information, including the previous staff report from Mr. Grounds has been, is also part of the record. Do you wish to add any, anything further to that?
No.
No? Okay. Is there anything else then on behalf of the city?
No.
All right, so we have the, I think that would bring us the public comment portion of this, and we have the sign-in sheet. All right, so we can have the mayor handle this portion, and then each person would get three minutes to present. And remember, we want to have the, any comments directed towards what's identified as the relevant issues in the memo.
Ned Greenwald, first on the sheet.
Just one word, sign the paper.
Yep.
And I need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I swear to tell the truth.
I swear to tell the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth. Well, I don't have a lot to say about this. I think in my own mind, I've listened to the argument that has been posted before the commission for the city council.
All right.
And the way it looks to me is the ground stands on its own merits. And I think, anything that we can add to Malin in the way of general apologies, I think that's a necessary thing to look at.
Thank you. Jim Fontenot, please.
Jimmy, just raise your right hand. I swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
Nothing but. Well, I'm asking the city council to approve this man as a gentleman, because we need changes in this town. And if this, that enough, this plan to get a change, why wouldn't it be right? So this is what I have to say.
Thank you. Rick Woodley, please.
I'd rather stay seated, but I will.
Yes, okay. I swear to tell the truth.
Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God. I originally was only going to be here on behalf of the planning council, but I need to correct some statements that Mr. Carroll made that are erroneous. I own or not now, or have I ever owned mobile homes on that property? My daughter owns one, my deceased brother owns the other. I do own the shop, the cow barn on the side. That land was brought into the city from a zoned agricultural decision. My dad had an annex to the city in 1980 or 81, I don't know what it was, Kay.
1981.
1981. My brother did petition the city to divide those two lots so he could put a home on it and his niece put a home on it. So I have not been party to that process, so Mr. Carroll is inaccurate in stating the facts. Those are not my properties, they never have been, they currently are not.
Anything else?
No, I'd be available to answer any planning commission questions that might arise.
Okay, thank you. Walt Harrison, please.
My name is Walt Harrison. Oh, sorry, you're not used to being sworn in. Yes. My name's Walt Harrison. I wrote down a few things, I think it won't take me anywhere near two minutes. I just want to say, I want to, I think the city needs housing here. Housing is going to bring money into all the businesses in this community, it's going to bring kids into this community, it's going to bring money for the city through taxes, through the schools. I can see nothing negative from it coming in. Everyone in city in here knows what a shortage we have of housing in this community. To have some new housing in here would be a definite benefit. My son and daughter-in-law themselves are staying here now, and they were looking to buy, but I told them not to buy around in here because these older houses, our fire department board has said that if they caught fire, they'd just let them burn down. So we need new houses here, so we get new people to come in and buy homes here. The next thing I'd like to say is, I'd just like to repeat something I've said at the last planning committee meeting, I said at the last two council meetings. I think council member Weiss should recuse herself from these proceedings for the same reason. She basically recused herself from this process in October 4 of 2005 because her family lives directly across the street. Rick Woodley, the chairperson of the planning committee, is her son-in-law, and Linda's her daughter, so she has a direct, whatever, in contact with the, with it, so she should be accused, recuse herself from that. I also said at the planning committee that I thought Mr. Woodley should recuse himself for the same exact reasons, he lives directly across the street. I went through that pretty quickly, folks, I think that might be just about it. Yeah, so I'm just asking this council, and instead of trying to find a way not to do the right thing through legal means or something, just do the right thing, just do the right thing this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can just address your point regarding the request that Mr. Woodley recused himself?
Yeah.
This is a new hearing, so this is all new, this is all on the city council to make that decision and everything that's, that's happened has happened, so it's a new, we have new decision makers here, so just to address that point.
I take that part back. Nobody heard me say that.
Linda Woodley.
I swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
I swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. I just have a couple of things to say. I, I do think we do need housing, but that's not the issue here today. And the issue is whether we give up our commercial property, and we've been working hard with a group around the basin to bring new business into our area, and so I think it should remain commercial.
Thank you. Cody Brutus.
I swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
Well, folks, I was here last time for, I believe that...
Well, folks, I was here last time for, I believe, the planning committee, listened to all the evidence. I just heard it all again. And it's all there. And I hear it and the need for change is there, right? I mean, yeah, sure, there might be some business, but throughout my life, there's been no new business here. Maybe a couple remodels on some buildings, that's about it. No, no new businesses come here, there's no need for all this commercial lot, it needs to be residential for houses. I know, I looked around the room, probably the youngest guy here, I can't, I can't buy a house in Malin. I wanted to, I bought one in Clamette, I wanted to buy one here, but there's nothing to buy. And like Walt just pointed out, why would I go out of my way and buy a house if it brings down? I'm S O L. So, the time, it's twenty eighteen, time now to make some changes in Malin, bring some more people in, boost the economy up. You provided all the evidence twice now and, like, everyone's pretty much pointed out, it's, it's there in front of you, you can read it. And he's just asking for something fair. I don't see why, after reading it all, and I, I bet in the background, I think, oh yeah, this is, this is pretty fair, let's, let's do this. So, we should hear it tonight, so everybody can hear the decision and hear that through the process of the council.
Thank you. Christine Bagone. Let me just address one, one point on that. The, um, the rules require that they, that the record be open so that additional information can be required by the applicant and the council doesn't want to make any decision, they have all the evidence. So that's the reason why they're not making the decision tonight. They're required to get that evidence, then close the record and then issue a written decision, um, which will likely be at a, at a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, we, uh, we have seven days after tonight to make the decision.
No, to, for the record to.
For the record to close.
And then thirty days from that.
Then we have thirty days from that time to, to make the decision, so.
Christine Bagone.
I swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Okay, so I own a small business here in Malin and I agree also that there needs to be more housing. But I believe that business brings business. I bring, or I, not me personally, but there's a lot of people that come from Clamette Falls to eat at the pizza place, I don't know if anybody knows that, but that is the truth. And they don't come to Malin, most of them for any other reason. We have a bazaar here once a year, I think that brings a lot of people in Malin. But I just think that as much as there needs to be housing, not a lot of people that come to Malin to buy a house want to live in a little lot like that, to my knowledge, okay? Most people are looking to buy bigger properties anyways. Not that that doesn't mean that you couldn't do something with it. I had heard that at one time you thought about putting businesses on the bottom and apartments on the top. I don't think that that's a horrible idea, but commercial land in Malin, I know that nobody's developed it, but you've had like a while now. Why don't you develop that into something that, like a manufacturing or something to bring jobs and then other areas to build houses later? Because I think the business brings business.
Thank you. Ryan Mattson.
I swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Hi, I'm currently new here to town. I've, uh, moved from Montana in about a year ago now. But, uh, I've actually lived here in town since April. And, uh, we're currently in the R B Park. My family of seven in a trailer because we kept finding houses suitable around here. I, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, I, I recognize you guys have been here longer than me and you know this area way better than I do, but I've been searching around for something suitable for my family, carry four bedroom, you know, something not too old, rickety. I found some stuff that's not so great out there, but nothing else is going to work for us. And winter's coming, I'd like to get into a house, there's just nothing available that I could buy. So I would agree, there is a dire shortage in town, um, as far as some of these other issues here. Uh, I think Mr. Carroll's very generous to offer leaving a third of his property for a commercial, especially the part that's right on Broadway where you can see it from driving by, that's the most valuable part for commercial. Around the corner on First Street, in front of the residential area, that's, I mean, maybe some manufacturing or something around the corner, but but then you're interfering with noise and traffic from the residents across the street or down the road. So I think the Broadway makes really good sense to have the commercial there and then have residential around the corner and bring more people in here who want housing and they can set up their businesses or, you know, things like that. Anyway, that's, uh, that's the thoughts I had about it. I hope we do get some good housing, good housing here shortly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scotty's here.
I swear to tell, I swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Um, I'm in agreement with having more housing in Malin. A lot of people can't afford to go out and buy out in the Malin area because of, you know, the properties expensive. But getting a place.
Here, Roy.
Roy, sorry, Roy.
It's okay.
Um, smaller, um, in a little packaged area, I think, would be great for people that are just starting to buy a, a, a home. And, um, I have a house for sale if you want.
I like these.
Um, yes, I am in total agreement for that to be zoned for housing.
Thank you. Freddie.
I swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
Uh, from listening to what's been going on, I'm, I'm in agreeance with everyone that, what they have said. I've been here fifteen years and I have seen absolutely no growth in Malin at all. There's, there's people come here from Clamette Falls, Shillwood, Belanda, Bligh, looking for housing, looking for jobs. They can get a job working in potato dead, they need a place to put their family, there is none. Uh, Roy puts in some housing, some apartments, the population would expand. The process of building the apartments and processing the, the land to do so will bring in more jobs, a higher paying job. Now people can invest more, like, you get a decent job. It may not last for a long time, but it'll be a decent job for a while. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Kenny Brusard, please.
I swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
I swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Okay, um, when we are planning commission, our first meeting, well, this year, in May, not the follow-up one, uh, people in the honors were allowed to express themselves. Uh, my brother gave his presentation and just like we're going around expressing ourselves, I stood up to express myself as well. And I was trying to make my, my, uh, point regarding, uh, student population at Malin, excuse me, yeah, Malin Elementary School. And as I was, uh, starting to talk about it and say, uh, the school almost closed, um, I was, um, interrupted by the chairperson, Mr. Woodley, saying, no, no, no. He voiced loud enough to go all across the room, no, 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 that that wasn't the reason why the, they had the meeting. And that wasn't the reason why the school almost closed, it was because of the budget. And I tried to say, oh, yes, it was because of the budget, but part of what I'm trying to say is the student population, the student participation, that that number, okay? I didn't have my evidence with me at the time to hand to him or, or it's not in the packet, but I do have it here and I have copies for the, um, for everyone. So, inside this Herald and News article, it says, and two thousand and nine, we had, um, one hundred and thirty-two students and the marker is one hundred and thirty. So that's why back then, when they were looking at the budget and talking about closing schools, they were thinking, we almost didn't meet our mark. So they did close two other schools in other locations, but Maryland and Malin got together and we all talked to the, uh, school board and all those people when they had the big meeting to say that we want to keep our school open. So what I was trying to get at was that by having residential come in, we possibly may have families coming into some of the houses and they may have students back in attend, whether it's Malin Elementary or the preschool here, or whether they get bussed over to the Head Start or where they go to Lost River. It still helps our community. So inside the, inside the Herald and News article, it also states, okay, there's, uh, highlight, highlighted areas, the comments from, um, Mr. Thiede, we have kept an eye, excuse me, I'm quoting Mr. Thiede, who was a superintendent at the time. We have kept an eye on enrollments at both of these schools, he's talking about Maryland and Malin, as they have continued to drop over the last few years, so it was a concern, okay? And then a continuation of this article, um, the first one is written by, well, it's by Bob Albrecht. And in there, he interviewed the city recorder, Kim Newmeyer, and her concerns about the school closing. And one of her comments were, she said that closing Maryland and Malin High Schools and moving students to Lost River High School was a blow to the city's economy and she's worried that town will take another hit if elementary students from Malin are sent to Maryland. So we do have a concern, I'm, I was trying to get at that, that we do want to keep our elementary school populated. And that's pretty much it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's the end of the public comments.
Okay, so at this time then, um, Mr. Carroll, if you want to have five minutes to, to, for summation?
Um, yeah, I'll try to take this quickly and note, uh, I want to go back to what Mr. Woodley said. Uh, if I do need to clarify, uh, the Woodley family, okay? So I don't think I was too far off when I mentioned Mr. Woodley. Okay, I didn't directly look at him, but the Woodley family is the one that purchased that property. Uh, Mr. Woodley stated a moment ago that this was agricultural coming in. Uh, we believe still, and we might have to research again, to provide more information to you, that it was actually commercial into the city of Malin annexed it. But if you still take it on what Mr. Woodley says, it was agricultural, it was not residential brought in. So he still asked for rezoning from agriculture to residential. And in the minutes that you have, and I don't know what the process that he's gone through, look at what I've been through two different times in multiple hearings. And he got his approved in nineteen ninety-nine. And then they came back and split the land, using it accordingly. So I don't think he had to go through the council for that or planning, but possible. I, I, I want to just respectfully disagree with the lady that works at the pizza place. I don't think business brings in business so much because if they do, if you have to come work here, there's nowhere to live. Are you driving from, from Clamette over here to work? And we have more elements of weather here, a little bit more difficult, I think. I haven't lived up here during the season, but I've heard about, they think the roads are different, you know, ice, whatever. It's a lot harder to come out. I spoke to a lady at Jimmy's Shop the other day, she needed tires, she just spoke nothing but Spanish. She worked down the street, hard-looking lady, traveling from Malin, tight budget, nowhere to live here. So she's commuting back and forth. So they, the workers need places to live. They work in a lot of these people's businesses. They need to work and, and use the services. There's no bank, the gas station has been closed for, as long as I've been coming here. I mean, if you're going to have services, you need people to use services. And so it's a combination of both, working together, providing houses. This gentleman just said he needed a house, he's a family of seven. He looks like a hard-working man. And that's the kind of gentleman that if he could buy a house, might consider starting a business. And if, if the need comes for storefronts, Broadway's available. You mentioned industrial, this property is not zoned, licensed, industrial. That's over there by the swamp lagoon and.
Sewer.
Sewer lagoon and the potato factory or whatever you have down there. You have your, all your light industrial over here. You want to be considered a bedroom community, uh, Mr. Woodley has a very nice house. He owns a lot he bought in between us that is, probably can put a house on it, but he prefers to have it like a little park. That's his prerogative, he bought the property. He doesn't want anything built across from him because he doesn't want his view blocked or whatever. I, I was told at the planning commission meeting, he says, you know what you bought? I bought mine and whatever's, you, uh, whatever I have and I know what was across the street, I accept whatever they put over there. Well, if it's a salvage yard or a wood pile, he would rather have that than having nice families, nice homes across the street. Not right, not right. So people need a place to live, they get, they're better in the community. If they're doing well, they think about starting a business. So, uh, if there's any, there's no new buildings in town, they're refurbishing some of the stuff and it's getting repurposed in town. But if it's going to be storefronts, Broadway's available for storefronts on the bottom. And that's what I'm trying to do in keeping the big picture. You guys sit down with me, talk to me, we'll put something beautiful that we can all be proud of. Okay, so we, in the packet, uh, there is Randy Woodley changing commercial to residential. So maybe you, you will find it in there, uh, with the manufacturer company in the lodges in the cheap house now. What was this again? And it happened on June sixth, nineteen ninety-nine, seven P M at City Hall, Malin Planning Commission. So I think you do have it that it went from commercial to residential. But like I said, if it was agricultural, you still approved a zoning change to residential, which you are denying me now, which has already set precedents. Thank you.
Okay, so that would, um, conclude the evidentiary portion of the hearing and so the record is now closed. As I stated before, Mr. Carroll will have seven days, um, to present additional written argument. Since the record's closed, there's no new evidence, but any additional arguments? If you'd like to, um, get the written statement that you made together and then submit that as an argument or something in addition to that, that's fine. I would, I would recommend that you, you should submit, um, proposed findings as well, if you want to do that, as a separate document. Because, um, that, the council, um, again, they have thirty days from that date to make a decision. Um, I believe for planning purposes, they've discussed at the next monthly meeting that there would be, um, a draft decision that can be considered by the, um, council. They can consider findings if you wish to submit them and any findings that staff, um, wants to, wants to present or any of the council members want to present as, as well, that would be, um, the final decision would be made. At that next meeting, there's no additional evidence, um, or, or argument. It's simply for the, um, for the written, um, findings to be presented, including your findings, and then the council can make the final decision at that time.
So the decision will also be in print, but will the public hearing at a council meeting, the vote?
Uh, yes, yes, the, yeah. So essentially, there'll, there'll be an agenda that will have the proposed findings and then the council can adopt those findings or modify those findings. And again, the, um, with respect to the, what's required, they can again either affirm or, um, or reverse the decision of the planning commission if they decide that they want to reverse and, um, approve, then they could, you know, have their own conditions if they want to and, and with respect to the application at that time, or they can remand to the planning commission. So all those, all those, um, options will be on the agenda as action items for the, you know. you know, alternative action items for the council to approve, and then the, um, the findings will be presented, and then the council can go through those findings in a public forum, and then, uh, make their decision at that time.
Thank you.
And then that will generate a written, there'll be a written findings, written decision at that point, and then again, um, we'll move forward from there. Okay? All right. What's that?
Glad you adjourned the meeting.
That's, yeah, that's it?
Yeah.
The meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.